Okay, I will call the December 9th Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Rosine, will you please start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, staff roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present with the exception of Chair Lowry, who was excused this evening.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, we will move on. Requests for continuances, staff, are there any requests for continuances?
Vice Chair Climan, there are no requests for continuances.
Thank you. Moving right along, consent items. Minutes of the November 18th meeting. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, and I think Mr. Mosher had sent some edits as well that we'd add or update.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Kettin? The motion carries five zero with Secretary Elmore abstaining.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public hearing items, beginning with item number two, the Sky Restaurant Minor Use Permit, PA 2021-149, site location 3400 Via Porto, Suite 104. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Vice Chair Climan and Planning Commission. I'm Liz West-Morland with the Planning Division. The application tonight is a minor use permit for the Skull Restaurant located at 3400 Via Porto. The project site is located within Lido Marina Village. It is located at the far corner of the village, near the SAP building. The proposed project includes the conversion of an existing vacant commercial space to a restaurant use. It includes approximately 1,500 gross square feet of floor area and approximately 200 square foot outdoor patio. There would be about 40 seats total, making it a relatively small restaurant. The project also includes a Type 47 alcoholic beverage control license, which would allow for the service of beer, wine, and liquor in conjunction with the operation of the restaurant. The project would have a closing hour of 11:00 PM daily. More specifically, we've received no objections from the Police Department regarding this application. Ultimately, the project results in a net reduction in ABC licenses, because the prior use that was in that space had licenses for their boat fleet. There are also no late hours or objectionable features of the project. The project does include a pass-through window, which would only be allowed for takeout service, and no alcohol would be able to pass through that window in compliance with the municipal code requirements. Lastly, the parking does comply with the requirements for Lido Marina Village. Lido Marina Village has a maximum allowed restaurant area for the entire village. This is allocated within their conditional use permit and their parking management plan for the entire village. At this point in time, there is very little available square footage left for a new restaurant. Therefore, the applicant, who is also the applicant for Malibu Farm and that restaurant, is voluntarily forfeiting their minor use permit for an expansion that was approved two years ago. I'll describe that in more detail. As shown in this exhibit, the existing Malibu Farm Restaurant is located in yellow. They have an existing use permit that they are currently operating under. Two years ago, the Planning Commission approved a minor use permit to allow them to expand into their neighboring suite, which is a retail store that they operate. However, they never acted on that use permit. And now they are opting to voluntarily forfeit that approval to now allocate that restaurant square footage to this new restaurant concept, Skull, which is shown in the blue area. Ultimately, they are in compliance with the conditional use permit that regulates parking for the entire village. Briefly, this is the floor plan for the Skull Restaurant with the bay located on the right-hand side of your screen. The yellow areas show the public boardwalk area, which is required to be maintained free and clear six feet. The outdoor dining areas are shown in blue, and the indoor dining is shown in the green area. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and approve the resolution. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant, as well as his architect, are available if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of our Commissioners have any questions for staff?
Yes, tell me, you know, I was here in 2014, I'm that old. Tell me how the parking management has been working. There was a lot of concern about it originally, the employees have to get on a bus and go over by the hospital and other places. How, give us a quick update on that.
In 2014, as you mentioned, they adopted the original conditional use permit and parking management plan for the area. After some time, they did realize some issues and things that they wanted to change about it. So I believe it was 2017, they prepared an amendment to that based on a pilot program they had been operating. And so they did make some operational changes to it to allow for the employee parking off-site during certain hours and certain peak times instead of every single day. And it did allow for some changes to employee parking to put that on the top level, some valet operational changes as well. And they, one of the important things was changing the pricing as well to incentivize employees to be parking onsite and not offsite within the neighborhoods in the area. Since that time, we've seen a major reduction in complaints. We're not aware of any issues at this time. And they have also, the landlord has filed an application to amend the conditional use permit further because Elektra has left. So there are some changes that, you know, may be made to that use permit, however, that is in the early stages.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners? I just had one about the hours. So the other restaurants, including their other restaurant, are they all closing at 11:00? Or they have conditions that allow them to close at 11:00, but they close earlier?
Generally, we condition it to 11:00 PM, since that's the marker of late hours or no late hours. So in this case, they've indicated that they would like to operate from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM daily. Most of the other restaurants have similar conditions. I believe Nobu and one other restaurant have late hours, however, most of them have these hours.
And the same question about music, I know that was one of the conditions, no music after 10:00 PM. Is that also pretty standard for everyone else in Lido Marina?
That's correct.
I also want to apologize for the mispronunciation of the name, so it's Skull. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, but the applicant might be able to clarify.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to ex-party communications.
None.
None for me?
None.
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 I had none.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant want to make a presentation?
Hi, I'm John Stockwell from Malibu Farm. I own it with my wife Elena, and it is Skull. It's a Swedish, my wife is Swedish, and it's a Swedish name for toast, or cheers. And essentially, we, we love being in Lido Marina Village. I mean, overall, compared to the parking issues we have up in Malibu at the Malibu Pier, it's, it's a blessing, and having our employees be able to park onsite. Definitely, no one parks offsite, because even if it's allowed, they would get so hassled by the, by the neighbors that it's, it's, it never happened, as far as I know. And I know there were a lot of parking questions about Elektra, but having them no longer there means those, you know, days when they had three boats operating and, you know, possibly 300, 400 people coming in who could all park in the, in the center, that's when we had real parking issues, and those have, for the most part, been largely alleviated. But it's a new concept, we're really excited about it, and if you have any questions for me, I can answer them.
I just, at this point, have one question about the, the recommended conditions. Are you in agreement with all of them?
Yes, I wish we had the business to stay open to 11:00. We're very daytime-oriented. In Malibu, we, we say 7:00 PM is like Malibu midnight. Lido is a little later, but we're not Nobu, we're not even Zinke or Bottle Works, which has a more of a late-night feel. Like, our busiest, our busiest period is lunch and brunch.
Okay, any of the Commissioners have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Kettin?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Staff report in the analysis indicated that there, you're, you're taking out a storage area in an office. Whose was that?
It was the Elektra. They had a prep kitchen and prep storage and liquor storage there. It was for the, it was for the Elektra boats. It was there, the front space was like an office space where I guess they had their meetings with potential clients. And then in the back, they had dry storage and a walk-in, and that's where they did all the food prep.
All right, and combination, either one of you, the staffer, you can answer. Aren't we looking for another, is the city looking, or somebody looking for another yacht company to come in there to run those beautiful tours? If so, there won't be any space for them.
My understanding at this time from conversations with the property management companies that they're not seeking to have other large-scale charter boats in that area. Since Elektra has left, they have filled it with smaller-scale boat rentals, so things like six people or fewer.
All right, as long as, everybody knows that down the road. Thank you.
Everyone good?
Any other questions for applicant? Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll go ahead and take public comments on this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Climan, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jim Mosher. First, to Commissioner Kettin's point, I would remind you, I don't know how you could enforce it here, but I believe there is a general plan commitment to preserve water-dependent uses. And kind of like boatyards, if all the locations for them disappear, that could be a problem. The comment I wanted to make is a very trivial one, like many of my comments are. But I wanted to say that the conditions imposed by some of the departments are becoming, it seems to me, increasingly cryptic. I would call your attention to handwritten page 24 and Condition of Approval 37, which is from the Fire Department. It cites things which I had to look up to find out what they are. It's not communicating very well to the public why those conditions are there or what they're for. And it seems strange, we go to great expense in the previous part of the resolution to spell out even what NBMC, Newport Beach Municipal Code, stands for. Here, we just say comply with CMC Chapter 517, which turns out to be the California Mechanical Code. It could be many other things, but I think it's the California Mechanical Code. And it's not actually a chapter, it's actually a section. 517 is a section of Chapter 517. So this seems more like notes, internal notes to the plan checker, rather than communication to the public or the applicant as to what they're supposed to do. So perhaps it should identify what CMC stands for, and perhaps it should say that to comply with food processing ventilation requirements, you will have to do these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other comments from the public on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Bring it back up to the Commission for discussion or a motion. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
And that includes, I would assume, the exemption from CEQA?
Yes.
That does, yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Our last item-
Merry Christmas.
Last item on the agenda for this evening. Item number three, 2021-2029 Housing Element Update, PA 2017-141. Site location, citywide.
Vice Chair, I will be recusing myself from this item. My employer has a financial interest in residential development. And since there's no other items on the agenda this evening, I'll be exiting stage left.
I don't know about that. You better wait in the other room, we might have something.
Yeah, unless there's something that I'd be happy to say.
You're dismissed, thank you, Commissioner Rosine, and happy holidays. Okay, staff, ready for your presentation?
Thank you, Vice Chair Climan, good evening, Planning Commission. Ben Zadibo at the Planning Division. I will give you a high-level overview on this very complex document, because I'm sure all of you read each and every page with red line strikeouts and everything. So I just wanted to start at a very ground-zero level. Regional housing needs assessment. I know it's been a while since we've come before you, but wanted to remind you that the sixth cycle regional housing needs assessment was incredibly high for the city of Newport Beach and other cities in the Orange County region. Region-wide in SCAG, we had to plan for 1.34 million new units. Our share is 4,845. The red box highlights the income categories for those units, and those comprise just about 71% of our RENA allocations. That's important to understand. 71% of the RENA allocation is affordable units for the city to plan for. And as you can understand, that's very challenging. That's just an underlying theme for this document, so I wanted to share that and start here. So the Housing Element Update, really important to do outreach and engagement. That's a huge component that we are very, we hold very important throughout the process. We want to make sure that we are transparent and sharing as much information as we can. So I wanted to do it kind of by the numbers for you, so bear with me on these animations. We held 12 General Plan Update Steering Committee meetings, and that may not be completely relevant to the housing element, but while that group was active, that's when the RENA process was occurring. Staff would provide regular updates to the Steering Committee, let them know what's going on with the RENA process, keep them apprised as to what our number was looking like. And ultimately, they decided that we should look at pivoting, or recommend a city council that we pivot to focus on housing because of that high number that we were looking at. So their, their meetings were important, because we started getting the word out at that point in time, and that happened starting in 2019. We had 14 Housing Element Update Advisory Committee meetings. They effectively replaced the General Plan Update Steering Committee to focus on housing. Then after that, and actually in the whole meantime, we had 13 workshops with the public. One Planning Commission study session with you all. Six city council study sessions. And that meant four drafts posted throughout that time online. All these numbers add up to 50 coincidentally, which 50 interactions is pretty impressive, I think, for any process. But the green numbers represent Brown Act meetings. So all in all, we held a fair amount of Brown Act meetings, which required public noticing and public comment. They all had opportunities for input, so I think that's very important to stress. We've done everything we can to try to involve the community and come up with a compliant document at the same time, again, for this very challenging RENA cycle. So again, providing a very high-level overview, we're happy to talk about any of these individually. How does the housing element look? It has four sections and four appendices, those are the basic parameters. You have the introduction, which talks about what the intent of the housing element is, and provides an overview of the document. A community profile, which has demographics and housing statistics for the city of Newport Beach. Resources constraints, and AFFH is short for Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing, which is very important to the state with this cycle. So that particular section, Section 3, is a little long-winded, but it identifies all the housing resources and resources the city has, what constraints we may have, and how we can counteract, or not counteract, but how we can further, affirmatively furthering fair housing in furtherance of the state's goals. Sorry for all the furthering there. Section 4 is really important. Section 4 is the housing plan, and it details the strategy as to how the city is going to demonstrate that we have the capacity to meet the regional housing needs assessment to the state, and particularly the state's Housing Community Development Department, or HCD, as I will refer to later on in this presentation. The appendices have a fair amount of information in them. The past performance talks about how we did with our last cycle. All the policies that we had in the general plan housing element are evaluated. The adequate sites analysis is very data-driven, it has a lot of tables in it, and we'll talk a little more about the focus areas that are included in there. Community engagement, as you saw, that'll detail a lot of the different engagement efforts we had with workshops. You'll see workshop materials like presentations, chat logs from the Zoom meetings we held. Yeah, and not to mention COVID-19 entered, so we had to do a lot of this via Zoom, which was a challenge in and of itself. But I think it did make it a little bit more accessible ironically, so we did have a fair amount of attendance at every Zoom meeting we had. Accessory Dwelling Units talks about the policies and programs that we intend to put in place that will encourage accessory dwelling units, as well as detailing the city's past production of accessory dwelling units and what we see going forward. It essentially justifies our ADU number that we're planning for in this cycle. The key policy actions to highlight, all the policy actions are in Section 4. Again, Section 4 is the housing plan, is probably one of the more important sections for you to review. I probably should have told you that a week ago, or maybe a week and a half ago, if you have not reviewed that, but there you go. Policy Actions 1A through 1G focus on the focus areas and the policies that help surround rezoning those focus areas to the different unit counts that we have in the, in the tables that follow in Appendix B. Policy Actions 1H through 1J talk about ADUs and the different programs there. So you'll see things like monitoring programs and incentives for ADU production. Policy 1K talks about inclusionary housing and where we start and where we go with inclusionary policies, and maybe a consideration again for an inclusionary ordinance in the future. Policy 1L talks about senior housing priority. That actually came out through a city council study session, where it was noted that the city has an aging demographic, and we really should be encouraging priority for senior housing projects in the city. So we do have a policy that speaks to that. 3A through 3B are fund state mandatory standards that are covered, as well as 4A, which talks about affirmatively furthering fair housing and policies that help support it. And then 7A through 7D talk about supportive housing, like low-barrier navigation centers and things that are required through state law. So kind of diving into some more detail, just wanted to show a couple focus areas for you. So this is the airport area, I understand it's probably a little challenging to see, but the pinkish areas are the opportunity sites that are identified throughout the airport area. And this is how the city demonstrates that we have the capacity to meet the RENA allocation. I'm not saying that it's all in the airport area, but the airport area does present a good housing opportunity for the city to produce some units. The one thing I'd like to point out, and I'm going to go ahead and change the map here on you. This map comes from a package that we submitted to the Airport Land Use Commission, because we do need to get their, we need to get their determination of consistency or inconsistency, which, of course, we were determined to be inconsistent with the Airport Environment's land use plan, because in this particular cycle, we left no stone unturned. You'll see that the green sites are the new housing sites that are being contemplated in the airport area. And a fair amount of them are within the 65 to 70 decibel community noise equivalent level area, which is generally inconsistent and incompatible for residential development in the airport area, unless there are certain development mitigation measures that are in place. So because of that, ALUC did find, determine that the city's plan was inconsistent with the Airport Environment's land use plan. Council did issue a notice of intent to override that determination, and we will be taking that back for a second public hearing in February to council to officially override that determination, or consider overriding that determination, rather. But I thought this was important to show, because the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee did scour the entire city and included a lot of effort in the airport area to identify sites that may be viable for housing opportunities. And some of these were also property interests, property owner interest letters that we had received voluntarily. Council had directed staff to include and exclude property owners who wish to be in the element or wish not to be in the element. So some of these were driven by property owner interests, such as the golf course at the southern tip there. Another one I wanted to share is Newport Center. And yes, that is Fashion Island covered in pink, but no, we are not saying Fashion Island is turning to housing. It's simply presenting an opportunity in case the airline company or subsequent property owner would like to present some residential units on that site. Again, the point is an exercise to demonstrate capacity. One thing I will note, since I saw Ms. Allen in the audience, the site plane view ordinance is something that is important to the city in this area. We understand it's important to the residents, and that is something that council has expressed there's really no interest in changing. So there are design parameters that would be respected and things that would be contemplated through the overlay creation process in the future when we rezone the properties. This is a lot of numbers, we'll talk through it. We'll go column by column, but essentially, you've got the different rezoned areas that are focus areas, that, as we call them in the housing element. So you've got airport area all the way down to Banning Ranch. The inventory area talks to the acreage that is afforded in each of those areas. Redevelopment percentage is a representation that that entire inventory area is not expected to redevelop as housing. So we are guesstimating, educated guess, that 23% are approximately, 23% of 162 acres is going to turn to residential in the future through this planning cycle, which is 2021 to 2029. The affordability is slated at 40% for most of the areas, with the exception of Coyote Canyon. And you'll see that that breaks down to mostly 30% low, very low-income affordable units and 10% moderate units. Again, we have to do that because of our very high affordability allocation through the RENA process. So I highlighted a couple of things here in red. Total net units, that represents what we recently submitted to the Housing Community Development Department for the state. And you'll notice off to the right, there's a yellow column, which shows the original submittal to the state and the delta between those two submittals. And that was done because of feedback received from State Department of Housing Community Development. Most notably, ADUs got chopped. So we had to come back with a number, and we worked very closely with HCD to come up with a number that would be supported by staff. And that's where we landed at 240, but what that did is it meant we lost 760 ADU units, most of which were affordable, which then meaning we had to turn up the dial on the rezone strategies, which is why you see now close to 1,700 more units via rezone, to recapture those affordable units. And you end up with more units in each focus area when the ADU counts go down. So I know, again, this is a lot to digest, we're happy to talk about it, but I wanted to just walk through how that table works. And all of this correlates to the tables in Appendix B to the housing element. So talking about HCD, we submitted August 13th our initial review for their preliminary feedback. We received comments on the 60th day, which is the deadline, they met the deadline. We did resubmit on November 17th for a second round of review, which some cities aren't even getting the chance to do that due to the timing, so we're glad we did. And comments are due back January 14th. So we do have an active draft that is under review with HCD, and is a draft that has been posted online that the public has been able to review. Ultimately, we must submit an adopted housing element no later than February 12th, 2022, which is quickly approaching. So kind of how does that fold into the entire process? I wanted to show- I wanted to show the November 17th date, because again, we did submit a revised draft to HCD. I put a checkmark by the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee, because on that meeting, the majority actually voted to recommend approval of this document to city council and recommended that it is a, they believe that it is a potentially certifiable document for HCD, and therefore they actually sunset it at that meeting. So I put a checkmark there to make sure we mentioned that. Obviously, we're here tonight, December 9th. In the new year, HCD will provide us comments. We'll be going to the city council at the regular meeting on February 8th to consider adoption of the housing element. We're hoping that if there are minor tweaks from HCD, we can make those before we go to city council on the 8th. Ultimately, submitting an adopted housing element for 60-day certification review to HCD on February 9th, and we'd anticipate getting feedback, or at least some sort of determination by April 10th. So that is the very fast-upcoming schedule for the housing element update. Before I go into the recommendation slide, I do want to talk about SEQA briefly. So throughout this process, there've been a lot of changes through the state legislature. I'm sure you've probably been made aware of some of them. I know we have a very astute public, and they follow the legislature very closely. AB 1398 basically requires a timely adoption of a, and this is key, certifiable housing element. So whereas before we were just aiming to adopt something by the deadline, it now has to be a certifiable element. If it is not a certifiable element, and again, we won't find out till April 2022, then the city must carry out all the implementation with the rezoning within one year of the statutory deadline, which makes that October 2022, which is six months after we find out. And yes, that is practically impossible for the city to do. So that is why, moving forward, we have the SEQA determination. At this time, we're working through SEQA exemptions. The project, I do want to kind of step back. The project continues to be in flux, because we have gotten feedback from HCD. We were never able to land on a particular project description. We've had to change it. Again, the ADUs decreased, which meant focus areas went up in different areas, and we don't even know if this is going to be acceptable until January 14th, when we get their next round of feedback. Another thing that I think is really important to note, this is a planning document. It includes policies and programs to meet the RENA allocation and to demonstrate compliance to the state. There are other things that have to happen before anything can be implemented from the housing element, namely, the land use element must be amended. We have to rezone, and as you know, we have Charter Section 423, which is likely to require a vote for all of these amendments. At that point in time, the city will be preparing an EIR to support those actions. But at this time, we do believe that the action for you is supported by SEQA categorical and statutory exemptions, which I've listed up there, basically boiling down to these are policies and programs to meet RENA, and they are feasibility or planning studies that are being considered to support potentially future actions. So with that, we do recommend you hold a public hearing. You find this action exempt from SEQA, both categorically and statutorily. You adopt the resolution recommending adoption to city council in accordance with policy K1. We are available for any questions. I do want to note that the city's housing consultant, Dave Barquist, from Kimbley-Horn and Associates, is available as well. And thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you so much for the very thorough presentation. I've decided that you get the unofficial award for the best graphics in all of your Does anyone up here on the dais have questions for staff?
Yeah, just some general comments and questions. So the state comes out with RENA allocation to the cities. The cities need to go out, find opportunity sites to provide all of this housing, but there is no requirement to actually build any of this housing, correct?
That's correct. This is the planning document. The city's not in the business of building or planning.
But, but, but the state would not hold the city responsible to find builders to come in and actually provide all of this housing within this tenure cycle period?
Right. Although we have to keep track of what is coming online, obviously, private market drives the demand for this.
And so the city of Newport Beach does not have an inclusionary housing requirement?
Not at this time.
So if a developer does come to the city and is looking at one of these opportunity sites, how would you require that developer to provide any type of affordable housing?
At this time, we have no mechanism to require affordable housing. We would need an inclusionary ordinance to do so.
And what does that process look like moving forward with the city?
Commissioner Klafter-Meyer, so the council is considering an inclusionary ordinance, and so we have done a study. We have draft studies already done. We do anticipate coming back to the city council with sharing those results of the studies with the city council in February of '22 and getting further direction from the city council on what they would like to see for an inclusionary ordinance.
And is the thought there that there would be a straight requirement for certain levels of affordability, or they could pay in an in-lu fee?
That's the general idea, yes. I think that's the direction we're going in. Again, we're waiting to see what the final results of the study are going to tell us, and we'll see what kind of direction the council wants us to give us. Prelimarily, they were open to some type of inclusionary requirement. Granted, maybe probably a low inclusionary requirement and an option for an in-lu fee, too.
So that would hopefully provide a mechanism to actually build some of these affordable housing units in the city.
That's correct. And Mr. Campbell can kind of weigh in on the new density bonus laws, which a lot of the developers are taking advantage of, which boosts the density if they provide a minimum of 5% low-income housing. So we're seeing some of those projects come through.
Yeah, so in the past, we've had a couple of large projects come through Planning Commission, and there has been an affordable component to that. Have all of those projects used the state density bonus?
I think Mr. Campbell can dive in. I think some of them were pre, pre-
Certainly. Commissioner Klafter-Meyer, yes, all of those projects actually took advantage of the density bonus provisions. And one point of clarification, we do have an area in the airport area called the Newport Place Plan Community that actually does have an inclusionary requirement. It's the only area of town, but the city doesn't have a citywide ordinance, as Mr. Zadiba indicated. But to satisfy that, in that planned community, we've had a density bonus project, the Newport Crossings project. We're currently processing one right now that you'll see in the upcoming year. The Uptown Newport project, the 4400 Von Karman project was density bonus, and the other one was the Saunders Planned Community also does anticipate density bonus. So all of those projects will have some component of affordable units.
And have, have you ever used the development agreement with some of these larger projects as a mechanism to require an affordable component if they're not exercising the state density bonus?
So I'll, I'll answer that question, because we're starting to utilize, in the public benefit fee, we have been able to negotiate fees that apply towards affordable housing. And so in theory, we're going to have a pool of funds that we're going to build up. We already have engaged with affordable housing developers to look at permanent supportive housing in the city. So we're definitely down that track right now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Thank you. I see Ms. Allen in the audience. I actually received a couple of calls on this specific, on your Slide Eight, that you had related to the Newport Center site plane, the Harborview Hills area there. So is, what, I guess, is the protection that they have? Is that something that's as an ordinance, or is that something that, in this document, that's protected for them? Because there's obviously some concern, and I want to make sure that that's addressed. I know when we, the only time we heard it in the Planning Commission, I had brought that up, too. So I, getting calls from that, I wanted to make sure that they're covered, or at least when this comes to city council, they recognize that.
Yes, great question, Commissioner Wagen. Yes, that is not necessarily covered in the housing element per se, but there is an ordinance that was enacted in 1971 for that particular site plane view ordinance. And as you mentioned, Ms. Allen has expressed that to council at almost every study session, I believe, and there's been no interest to make any changes there. And that is something that would still remain on the books and would regulate development in that particular area.
So while it's listed on here, it's not really a document you really sent to the state. It's just in our internal books that prevents it moving forward.
Correct. It's a city ordinance.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure that that, because that obviously is something that had come up twice in our discussions here, so. And then on the Housing Element Committee, you had said that it, it had support, but there was some votes that didn't. What, what were the nexus on that related to, if you could share?
Sure. I'll try to iterate what the expression was from the two dissenters. There was one concerned with the word certifiable, and the committee making the determination that the document was potentially certifiable. They believed that HCD should be making that call and did not feel comfortable with that determination from that body. And then the other expressed concerns of the SEQA determination, and the remaining, as you know, voted in a favor of approving that motion.
And that covered what you were discussing on the SEQA there? There were some concerns that the language didn't match up to what it was?
Correct.
Okay. And then just on a side note, we've been meeting Vice Chair Climen and Chair Lowry, and I have been meeting with staff on the ADU discussion in hopes that we can increase those numbers as we go. So while they've just been kind of informal, ad hoc, you know, at a, at a small level, kind of getting an, an understanding of our, how we're going to move forward with the public, we're at least starting those discussions so that the public knows that we're kind of in the initial stage, and then we'll be moving into the open kind of hearing stage. So I don't know, Simone, if you wanted to add any additional to that, but I think I probably mentioned-
That's correct. Commissioner Wagen, the ad hoc committee members from the Planning Commission are, have been focusing on ADUs. The council directed staff to come up with more permissive language for our ordinance regarding ADUs, really in compliance for state law and in support of our housing element. So whatever production we can get out of ADUs, we'll be able to report that. So the more we produce in ADUs, hopefully less production we will see with these bigger multifamily projects, as Ben went through. Our next stage is going to do a lot more public outreach and get input from the public on the ADU ordinance, and we anticipate that probably the first quarter of 2022, and we'll do that public outreach.
Thanks, Simone. I just thought it'd be important to just add that, too, and the fact that it's not like a rush. We don't have to have this committee rush anything through. It can kind of be done at leisure, but it'll ultimately benefit this document moving into the future and prevent an excessive amount of new projects and allow us to pull in where we have existing projects. Thank you.
Commissioner Ketting?
Yes, clarification a little bit. You mentioned in the, in your report and in the written report, these have to be overlaid and rezoned? Is that correct?
Overlay is basically the rezoning mechanism that we're envisioning to not change the land use and let the underlying land use that's currently on the site remain and not become non-conforming, just adding additional opportunity, in other words.
Okay, then let's look at Appendix B, and you, you're showing Banning Ranch, potentially 1,475 units. Is that gone now?
It has not been stricken at this time. It's still in the element.
Is it plausible, based on what they're doing there with the, with the, you know, the land being bought and donated to public space?
Let me jump in on this, Commissioner Ketting. So we've had these discussions with the city council. There is opportunity on Banning Ranch. There is land that is not impacted by any environmental-sensitive areas. So those, those little pieces of remnants of parcels that we think can be developed, we are putting it in our housing element.
Great. Same with Newport Center rezone. It says 1,753. Okay, that's that purple area in the middle that Mr. Wigen was speaking of. That's the ultimate possibility if they ever wanted to do it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. And this thing has to be wrapped up by February of '23?
'22.
'22?
Correct.
Anyone else? I just have a couple of follow-ups on some of the comments made. So we were talking about the overlay. I just wanted to clarify there. So it still gives the flexibility. In other words, we're not actually changing the zoning. Can you just kind of explain that and then how it's first come, first served? So we've identified all these sites, and it gives the opportunity for those to be developed the way the, the plan outlines, but there's no guarantee, right? And there's no, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that all of these units will be developed, right?
So the overlay is something that's going to be determined later down the line, but what we do envision is some sort of a tapering effect, whereas units come online, less and less becomes available until eventually the RENA allocation capacity demonstrated for that area has been met and no more units are afforded. So we are looking at doing that through the overlay. And that's correct. It's not rezoning. It is just adding a potential overlay on top of the existing zoning to allow for additional opportunity to add housing in certain areas.
Right. Okay. And then we also talked about SEQA. Can, can we just kind of focus in a little bit on next steps? So this obviously has to be submitted and hopefully approved in just a few months from now. So assuming it gets certified, then we fold this into our general plan update, right? And then we have to do a full-blown EIR for that, right? And then after that, each of these individual projects, should somebody decide to come forward with a project, you know, in this overlay, if that's how we're utilizing it, would have to then do additional environmental studies and go through the process there.
Right. And one thing I failed to mention is the write-up in the staff report and in the resolution is a very small summary of the SEQA exemptions that we are looking at. When this comes before council, there will be a full-on memorandum explaining the exemption and why it's appropriate. So I did want to mention that, that when it is up for adoption, there will be a better SEQA explanation at that time. And you are correct. When the land use element and other elements that are required to implement the housing element are considered, we will be preparing an environmental impact report, which will be programmatic. It will be looking at the bigger picture, and then the smaller projects can tear off that with their own individual environmental documents as required based on the merits of the project.
Okay, yeah, the, the, the next step for this body making a recommendation to council, which is what we're doing here today, is that's an important thing to note, that really the lion's share of the work has been done, as we saw in your presentation at the city council level, and certainly the public has had plenty of opportunity for input there. Also gives way to question, I know you mentioned it in your presentation, and I saw it in their comment letter, which is our Greenlight Charter Amendment, or is it an amendment, or is it, yeah, Charter Section, thank you. So I noticed that they're, I don't know if I would say they're taking issue with it, but they certainly called it out. Do we have any sense of what will come of that, or we just kind of play it out?
They did make a comment, and they view, they being HCD. HCD identified that as a potential constraint to housing development, something that would potentially prohibit housing development in accordance with the housing element, and may eventually nullify and result in a decertification of the housing element if the vote were to fail. So in our response to HCD and in the updated revised document, you will see a milestone table that talks through what that process looks like and how the vote will occur, basically what happens if the vote fails. The city does anticipate revising the planning, going back to a vote, and if that fails, then we will ask the state's attorney general how to proceed.
Okay. Last question, or just again, further clarification, as yes, we do see Ms. Allen here, and as Commissioner Wagen mentioned as well, the site plan ordinance, we talked about this last time it came before us, it stands. This doesn't change that. So in other words, I know there's a couple of sites that have been identified for potential development in kind of that Fashion Island area that could potentially be problematic for that. But so as we just discussed, the process still remains, and that ordinance also remains. So if someone comes forward and wants to develop a site in that site plane, they would be subject to that ordinance, correct?
Correct, unless there were subsequent council action to undo the ordinance, which we didn't get that sense from council when last presented.
Great. Okay. Great, okay. Thank you so much and for all of your, the whole staff's work on this is tremendous. At this point, we will take ex-party communication. I'll start. I've had conversations with a few members of the public.
None.
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 And I too have had some discussion with the public on this.
Okay, we will open the public hearing. Does anyone from the audience want to comment?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Climon. Since you all now know that the site plane ordinance is the reason that I'm here, it has been... Oh, I'm Deborah Allen. I'm president of the Harbor v. Host Community Association. And I'm here on behalf of about 250 homes up on the hill across the street, about 500, 600 people who have bought their homes in reliance on that site plane ordinance, which has been in effect for 50 years. It basically deals with property in the lower section of Newport Center, generally in the vicinity of really City Hall. As a matter of fact, when the City Hall was developed, the city recognized the site plane ordinance and limited the height of this building to comply with the ordinance. We have, the Housing Element Update Committee sent out some letters of inquiry to property owners in these areas that they have identified as potential sites, and many didn't respond at all, but there were several responses indicating some interest in developing housing in areas covered by the site plane, particularly along Pacific Coast Highway, generally between Avocado and Newport Center Drive, there are some older office buildings and those property owners did indicate some interest in developing housing. And clearly, you know, that's not a problem as long as they comply with the site plane ordinance. And we, my interest in coming here was to encourage you to continue your support. We had hoped that something would be in the element itself, but staff has told us that that would be premature. The ordinance, the site plane ordinance remains, and then when you do the design standards, I believe that's what they're called, that will be part of the criteria that will be set up for people who want to redevelop as housing. So I'm here to thank you for your continued support, to thank staff for recognizing this and to let you know that I'm here to answer any questions if you have any or at any point if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
I just wanted you to confirm for our commission, you were once a commissioner here in this body, correct?
I was.
All right.
A long time ago. It was my first city appointment.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Climon, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I wanted to make it clear that I don't doubt the sincerity of our city staff in grappling with this very difficult problem. But I also want to make it clear that despite their immense effort at engaging the public in this, I at least view this as very much a staff-written document that contains staff-written policies that have never been publicly reviewed or discussed to any appreciable extent. In that respect, I think it's important for you to understand that although the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee did prior to you make a recommendation that this should be approved by the city council, they did not as a body review those staff-written policies to, as far as I know. Some of them individually commented on the document, but as a group, what they felt their task was, was only looking for the opportunity sites within the city. That was their whole charter as they understood it. And in fact, it was, as I followed their process, it was limited to looking for currently non-residential properties in Newport Beach that had a potential to be developed as residential. I do not recall them looking into questions such as whether existing residential areas could be densified, aside from the ADU issue, or any other questions of that sort, and especially not looking at any of the policies that are in here. I myself cannot say I have read or understand all of those. And as to the question that was asked about whether the city has to actually build any of this stuff that it is speculating could be built, I thought the answer was perhaps a little incomplete if you've not been following this closely. City employees and city contractors don't have to build these housing units, but if they do not appear in the next eight years of this planning cycle, the city faces sanctions and it faces automatic approval of applications for development, as I understand it. So it's not just something we can promise anything and it's of no consequence what we promise. There are consequences to it. And as far as the public engagement, I think if, at this point, it seems a little late for the public to be commenting on what the staff is presenting to HCD. It would be helpful, though, if there were somewhere public copies that the public could look at. In our City Hall, there is only one printed copy of this. I realize it's online in a bunch of pieces, which are a little difficult to navigate, has no index. In the City Hall, there's only one copy. It's not the most recent submission. It's not even the earlier submission to HCD. It's the June version of the thing. And then finally, in connection with the, can I have an extra minute? There's not a huge crowd here wanting to speak to tonight.
If you could just conclude. Thank you.
As to the numbers that are promised in it, I am wondering, the city council at its last meeting heard about SB 9, a state measure that's going into effect on January 1st, which is changing our one properties throughout Newport Beach so that multiple houses can be built on them. I'm wondering, doesn't that impact our estimates in some way? Doesn't some provision needed for that? And I continue to be unable to understand the presentation, which is in Appendix B of Banning Ranch. It says we're considering only 30 acres, but it does not say where those are. And indeed, it provides a map showing housing everywhere over the 400 acres, including in the water. And I continue to be puzzled how HCD will interpret that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other comments?
Good evening, Vice Chair Climon and commissioners. I know you know that there's no other reason that the three people here are here is to speak on this. Can we go back to the slide that you showed that had the inclusion, the outreach? It had all the different things that you, look at that one. Okay, so I have been to 12 GPSC meetings. I've been to 14 HECU meetings. I've been to 12, I missed one workshop. I've been to the PC study session and six study sessions. Can you go to Slide 10? No, that one. So what I've learned from that is that in this slide where it says total affordable housing by and then 40% all the way down, that means, except for Coyote Canyon, that means that out of a development that has 100 homes, 40 of those would be affordable. And we have approved zero projects like that. There are several new ones that have had no affordable homes. There are a couple that have had 5%. So it is pretty unlikely that we're going to meet that. That being said, we had to get through this. I'm not criticizing staff. There's nothing else we can do. We got to get this figured out. But what it tells me is that the numbers of total development potential where it says 9,000, that that number could be a lot higher because when they develop those at less than 40%, that means there's going to be more market rate, less affordable, so we got to build more and more market rate to make the fewer affordable, plus we have the density bonus. So all of that is a very challenging scenario. I would suggest that some of the solution for this is to put in some 100% affordable senior housing projects, one, maybe two, get, lop off a whole bunch of those numbers right off the top and that reduces the overall number of affordable, or the number of market rate houses that we have to have, units. We could also work really, really hard at getting additional ADUs. And there may be some SB 9 development houses that would be duplexes that at some point will maybe contribute to this and that'll help change this. One of the things that we can also do is the development fees that come from these other projects that have a large number of market rate units, those development fees be dedicated, completely directed to go toward affordable, 100% affordable projects so that we can make these happen and lower that overall number from more than 9,000. I've been saying 20,000, maybe it's 15, maybe it's 12, but it's a lot. And then the last thing regarding the SB 9, that doesn't really, hasn't been addressed in our housing element at all, so that will impact what's happening here. There is a California initiative right now that City Council...
Go ahead and wrap up, yeah.
Yeah. The City Council recommended to the city to support it, and there are petitions currently available for people to sign to get that amendment or that initiative on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll let staff, if you would like, respond.
Sure, Vice Chair Climon, I can address a few things. So regarding the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee and reviewing policies, Mr. Mosher is correct. The main charge that Chair Larry Tucker took was identifying sites that are either feasible or potentially feasible for residential redevelopment in the future. Their focus was not on the policy component of the document. I do think it's important to note that the policies were shared over and over with city council whenever a study session was had and the drafts were presented. So city council has largely had the policies before them and they've included on a few of them. We've heard them talk about inclusionary and that's why, as Simone said, we are undergoing efforts to look at inclusionary housing. The senior housing policy came to be, so there are policy direction that has come from city council over time. As far as Banning Ranch goes, Mr. Mosher is correct. The map does identify the entire Banning Ranch site as an opportunity, but it's mainly because we don't know exactly where those 30 acres that we're estimating are, so we're just showing the site as a placeholder at this time. I do not know how HCD will react to that, but we did provide a large amount of evidence in this most recent submittal, which you can see in the housing plan on the latest draft. As far as SB 9 goes, and it was mentioned a couple times by Mr. Mosher and Ms. Scarborough, the reason that's not in the housing element is everything's been coming very late related to SB 9. It was recently signed into law in September and HCD has not even issued its guidance on how to implement SB 9 related to housing elements. Preliminary discussion with HCD staff indicates that there may need to be some sort of implementation program in the housing element to better guide how to take advantage, but the key component that's going to be challenging for SB 9 projects is there's no affordability requirement. So that could mean you just have market rate duplexes coming online, which don't really help the city meeting the RENA requirement. And as far as the table goes, that Ms. Scarborough was mentioning, the 40%, I just want to mention that there's no preclusion of 100% affordable housing project coming online and offloading some of those units, just as much as we say 240 accessory dwelling units. We're not limiting 240 accessory dwelling units. We're saying at least. So we could produce 1,000 and that will offset some of the RENA requirement that we have that we're showing in the table. So I just want to clarify, those are not maximums, those are minimums, and there's expected to be an ebb and flow that some projects may come in lower and some may come in higher. And that is also why we have a surplus at the bottom of that table as well. So I think that does it for what I'd like to address, but happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions before we, Commissioner Wigan?
A simple one. Is every city in the state of California on the same timeline?
No, it varies by region.
Oh. I don't know how they could process all these.
We've heard it's a lot of work. We've talked to HCD staff and each of them has about eight elements at a time to review.
Commissioner Wigan?
On that SB 9 implementation part you were discussing, so if there, is there a component to force affordability to it or is that something the state would have to do or is that something we could do locally?
Some cities are crafting ordinances to include affordability requirements on one of the units. It's unclear how legitimate that is. Again, this is a very late and fast-moving bill where a lot of cities are, some would say, reacting very quickly. And from what we've heard from HCD, they are going to be issuing guidance that'll somewhat undermine some of that ordinance prescriptions that are being offered by other cities. So we're not entirely sure how that will play out, but affordability could be something that the city could consider enacting through an ordinance.
Maybe enough of those petitions can get signed before they actually figure out how to act on it and then the ballot measure can be signed into law and revoked. So maybe we've got some hope if they can't figure it out in their own speed. The other interesting and intriguing that I've always kind of felt that Ms. Scarborough brought up was that affordable senior housing. How deep have we dived into that or dove into that discussion related to senior housing? And, you know, obviously it's kind of, it's intriguing to me because there's no, at that level, most people aren't driving at senior housing level, so there's not as much impacts to our services and our communities so that you have less cars on the road, but you could fulfill those housing requirements. So is that something that has been brought up in pretty good detail?
I don't know, that population's quite the party animal, but yeah, they do not drive, so I understand that comment. We have a policy in the housing element, as I mentioned, that prioritizes senior affordable housing. So that is something that could be enacted to review programs that could help encourage 100% affordable projects in the future for seniors.
Yeah, I think as the population ages, especially around Newport, people want to stay in Newport, so I think that that's an important policy moving forward that I hope gets a lot of discussion. Thanks.
Any other questions for commissioners? Has anyone, is this the first of the reporting periods? Has anyone else had to submit and get a response yet? I'm just curious. We're the guinea pigs here.
As far as the preliminary drafts, no, we're kind of in the middle of the pack. Some cities have not even submitted a draft, but they're most, the majority, I would say, submitted their first draft in October, so we were in front of them a little bit. But as I said, a lot of cities are not submitting for a second review, so we do have that benefit and we are anticipating those comments again January 14th. Their first comment letter was about 10 pages of content, so we're hoping about maybe 20% of that would be nice. We'll see.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to commission for discussion or a motion.
Can we hold our nose when we vote for this?
We can cross our fingers behind our back.
Motion for approval. Need to move this down the road.
This again is a recommendation to council.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously.
Item number four, motion for reconsideration. Are there any? Hearing none. Move on to item number five, report by the community development director or requests for matters which a planning commissioner member would like placed on a future agenda.
Vice Chair Climon, I'll go ahead and do the director's report. Just a couple of items here. So the city council at their last meeting on the 30th, we took up two study sessions that will be items that will be coming forward to the commission in the future. One, about a parking code update, so we've been working on our parking code to modernize that and to update that, so that'll be coming...
to modernize that and to update that, so that'll be coming forward. The council did initiate that amendment. There was a study session on SB9 and SB10, so we got some direction from the city council on that future amendment, and as Mr. Zadiva indicated, we're going to be waiting for HCD's guidance memo and then bringing on ordinance back forward in the early part of 2022. Couple of other items. The council approved the LCP cleanup item that you saw, the tattoo establishment ordinance, short-term lodging, and the big project on their agenda was the library lecture hall. The council did approve that at the last meeting, so there will be a new construction in the parking lot of the library. Let's see. Just real quick, I want to let everyone know that we've also got... The city hall's been closed on the 24th through the end of the year, so for that holiday break. We'll be back on... Open here in the city hall on January 3rd. Our next upcoming meeting is the planning commission will be on the 20th. We do have an item on the agenda for expanding the Little House Hotel, so that'll be coming forward. And the last item I wanted to discuss is that next week, there's a meeting, the ad hoc city council meeting on Monday, the 13th, on redistricting. So, that's an item that we do every 10 years here citywide. It's not really related to planning commission, but I thought that might be of interest to you folks. So, there'll be an ad hoc committee meeting in the evening on the 13th to look at various different changes to the maps based upon different population. That's all I really have for you folks. I do wish everyone a happy holidays, but if there's any questions on the report, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Looks like zoning administrator has quite a slate on the 16th.
Yes, there is.
Laundry list there.
Yeah, the zoning administrator is very active at this point because of those emergency temporary patios with the council's endorsement. We've been starting to do limited-term permits for either a 90-day extension or potentially up to a year, so there's a lot of those happening right now.
Got it. Thank you. I combined these earlier. Are there any matters which a planning commissioner would like to place on a future agenda? Okay. Does anyone from our audience want to comment on these items we just heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to requests for excused absences. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Happy holidays.
Drop, Madam Chair.